Hey, we'd like to call up and order the Town of Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission, September 29th, 2025 meeting.
Mr. Laflamme.
Here.
Ms. Strain.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
President.
Mr. Millsbaugh.
Here.
Chairman Dorpino.
Here.
Next up is the approval of the September 8th, 2025 meeting minutes. Can I get a motion?
I move.
Moved by Mr. Khan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Strain. Any comments or corrections? I had one minor ones. Line 24, I believe Mr. Millsbaugh was not at the last meeting. He was excused. Okay.
Yep, correct.
Okay. So I'll propose to amend the September 8th, 2025 meeting minutes on line 24 to add Mr. Millsbaugh as excused. Could I get a second?
So moved.
A second by Mr. Khan. Okay. Any other comments or corrections? All in favor of the September 8th, 2025 modified meeting minutes state by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Okay, so approved as modified. Next up is public hearings. Our first public hearing is 3406 Albany Street, an application for site plan review requiring area variances and a special use permit for the operation of the place of worship at a single family home. Ms. Bragami, could you please all read the public notice?
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to the zoning ordinance of the Town of Niskiuna, New York, and the applicable provisions of the town law of the state of New York, a public hearing will be held by the Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town of Niskiuna in the Town Board Meeting Room at 1 Niskiuna Circle at 21, on the 29th day of September, 2025, at 7:00 PM to consider an application from Mayo M. Khan for a site plan review and special use permit for a place of worship at 3406 Albany Street, lot 60 dot 14 dash 1 dash 2 in the Town of Niskiuna. The property is located within the R2 medium density residential zoning district. A copy of the site plan application will be available for inspection at the Planning Department in the Niskiuna Town Hall and can be viewed at the Town website under the Public Hearings tab and will be shown electronically during the public hearing. If you wish to express an opinion regarding the public hearing, you may do so at the above mentioned time and place. If you cannot be present, you may request a virtual login to the meeting by emailing lrobertson@niskiuna.org or calling 518-386-4531, or you may set forth your opinion in a letter, which will be made part of the permanent record. Please note there is a five minute time limit for each speaker at the public hearing and submitted letters will not be read out loud at the public hearing, but such letters will be included in the minutes and added to the record. The Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town of Niskiuna will hear all persons interested in the aforementioned public hearing. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Niskiuna, New York, David Dorpino, Chairman, Planning Board and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Bragami.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Daniel Hirschberg with Hirschberg and Hirschberg. With me are members of the Buddhist organization.
I'm Dr. New William Yu, representing of that this organization.
And I knew representing this organization too.
Okay, Mr. Hirschberg, if you wanted to give a quick recap of the project, that would be, that would be great. We will then open it up and I'll talk about what the outline is for the, for the public hearing.
He started with a plan which showed essentially the existing conditions. As a matter of fact, it showed the pre-existing condition because it had changed from the time the survey was made. And added was that building that is now used for prayer. It's in an area where a garage was proposed and it, it exists there. And the area also has parking out on Albany Street, space for really one car and drive-through because our goal would be to allow some additional parking internal to the site inside that fence line by putting in some concrete pavers with grass going in them. That makes it, you know, a permeable surface, which is desirous for environmental reasons. And we don't think the quantity of parking here is significant. On a typical Sunday, there's two, three or four cars there. Not, not much more. And they do have the arrangement to use the parking lot across the street on Sundays, which is the main day of prayer here. If the members want, you want to say anything else, you can add some.
May I have a few minutes to present that some of our, to understand this for the our events?
Yes, you can state your name and record for the address.
Okay.
And then you can talk about, you can talk about anything regarding this project.
Thank you. My name is Dr. New William Yu, living in Kaptor region. And professionally, I serve as the data unique director of the New York State Department of Health and research scientist for the Department of Health. And I'm honored to be a member of New York State API Task Force. And I representing on behalf of our community. It is a newly formed, a small non-profit religious organization. So I respectfully request your approval of the site plans that you've already mentioned and Dan's already mentioned of our Buddhist community. So Buddhism has been predicts mindfulness meditation for thousands of years. And this is not simply about the building. It is about maintaining our faith, culture and traditions and passing those values on our next generation. This building is not a large temple. It's not a public hall that we use as a, not as a mass gathering. It is a small, quiet prayer and meditation space converted from the fallen down garage and we modify with the approval of the Town Hall. The residence on the property is occupied by single tenant, no car. Our honorable Mark, who has no car and no overnight guests or bookings are allowed on the property as it is strictly designated for the religious purpose only. On Sunday, weekly meditation sections, these are the small, only not more than 12 people, two or three and more than, not more than four cars. And we plan to hold others annual events like the Wizard Day. That this is Buddha Day, same as the Christmas, the Jesus Christ Day. And also the Lunar New Year's celebration only brings 30 to 40 families, not like a block party. Out of the respects of neighborhood, these are held only on Sunday with parking secured through the generosity of owner of 3410 State Street, who has graciously provided 70 spaces free of charge. A written document already submitted to the planning board. In addition, we will arrange for the volunteers to help with safe cross, street crossing and also for their booking guidance to ensure traffic and pedestrian safety. We are also committed to being good neighbors. We always inform and invite nearby residents as well as the local police department before the events. Even at the annual events, there will be no amplified music or disruptive activities. Our activities are only meditation and prayer, quiet by nature. So we also remain open to our neighbors' feedback and suggestion on how we can improve our events planning. And so I like to press, mention some of our immigrant community. Some others are like as some others immigrant community. We do host the cultural and fundraising and social catering events, but never at this residential address. Those are held at, on August, we held our summer festival in Albany County, Cony Preserve. And also on September, we did the fundraising events at the Ransalia River from Park. So with the attendance of congressmen, senators, and also for the mayors and legislatures. That demonstrate our respects of residential zoning law. And I would like to request some more. As a non-profit faith-based, community-based organization, we depend on member contribution. Many walk blue collar jobs. And we have already exhausted much of our limited funding for the site survey and engineering fees. The application review and approval fee of 6,628 is far too high for the small, non-profit religious organization like ours to afford. So we respectfully ask for this committee guidance, consideration and possible adjustment to make this process more accessible for underserved community like us. I have some more batch with the time permissions and I will stop here.
You can continue.
Um, David, can I just jump in?
Yeah.
That fee that you're talking about is a scam. So we think that every single person on our agenda meeting received an email requesting that kind of funding. You can forward it on to us and like Leslie suggested, we'll forward it on to the police, but no more fees are due to town. The town will never ask anybody to wire anything to anybody. Those fees are not to be paid.
Oh, then you also got that email, right? This email?
Yes.
Okay, so forward those emails to us. You can continue. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. We're going to mention it later on, but it appears you also got that email and it's a scam.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it says to wire the money too, which we would never ask anyone to wire money to the town ever.
Yeah, thank you.
Clarification. Okay, so go ahead and summarize because we're going to have other people here for specifically this project to talk about at the public.
So, yes. Anyway, in closing, this is a small respectful project that complies with zoning, causes no disruption. So on behalf of our minority Buddhist community, I respectfully ask for your approval of the site plan and the special use permit. Thank you for your time and service for the town. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak at the public hearing? May I approach the podium?
Hi, I'm Craig Cerafini. I own the property at 3410 State Street, which is allowing their use for parking on Sundays. This is very simple. I know that the board has to go through different, you know, procedures to approve things and review them. But when you look at society as a whole right now and you see what's going on and then you see a group that comes in and all they're saying is we want to have peace. We want to just sit. We want to talk. We want to meditate. They bring nothing but positive to our neighborhood. They are quiet. They are respectful. They are wonderful neighbors. That's why I've given them, you know, the access to my parking lot. And I think that the town should review this as necessary and give them the approvals that they need so that they can bring more peace, more calm, more positive to the neighborhood as a whole. That's simple. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Katrin Malin and I'm the owner of Graham's Coffee Parlour at 3406 State Street. Craig's my neighbor, they're my neighbor. And we possibly, like, he just took the words out of my mouth, basically exactly what I was going to say. Once I saw that, like, that building was falling apart, new owners came in, they came in, they fixed the place up. They've been absolutely a pleasure to have as neighbors. I think it's a super positive thing for the community, a positive thing for young people to see people practicing something that has to do with themselves and mindfulness and being a good person. And I also allow them, I don't have it in writing here, but they're also allowed to use my parking additionally for overflow. And they've been 100% like, could not be more respectful neighbors. I'm very happy to have all of the neighbors that I have. So I really hope that us showing our support shows that we are the people that are interacting with them the most. And we see the traffic and it's literally only on Sundays and it's really not that many cars ever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris Connors. I work at Graham's. So I've come to know the temple as well, a little closer.
Thank you.
Um, should I restate my name? Uh, my name is Chris Connors. I work at Graham's. I've known these friends as my neighbors for a few months now as I've started working there. And everything that I could have said has already been said. But, you know, I would like to reiterate that these people are a wonderful addition to the community. Um, I think that their temple is a beautiful thing to have in this area. It's the only Buddhist temple that I know of. So as they said about being a religious minority, uh, please, you know, take that into consideration when approving this project. Uh, as far as I know, the traffic is some, somewhat of a problem in the approval of this, of this project. Uh, you know, as you can see, the parking is not really an issue. There's a lot of pedestrian crosswalk signs that I've seen like on my way here in the Town of Niskiuna, like driving here. Uh, there's one, give or take a thousand feet down the road on Albany Street. Maybe add one of those in. Uh, I know, I don't know how the funding for that works, but consider that as well if the traffic is an issue. But like I said, I'd like to reiterate my support for these people and how much they bring for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll keep it. I'll keep it short and simple. They're just respectful.
Uh, name and address, please.
Oh, Matthew Coonley, 3416 Albany Street. They're very respectful. Anything you ask, if there's any issues, they always fix it. So great people. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak in attendance for the public hearing? Okay, we'll open it up to online correspondence or anyone that called in?
Yeah, so there's no one online. And then I'll just acknowledge the letter that was received from Marilyn Brown at 123 Gazzner with email to you guys today.
Okay, that'll be made part of the record. Okay, uh, last chance for speaking at the public hearing. All right, seeing as no one further, we're going to close the public hearing and move on to privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor is now open for any resident of Niskiuna to speak about any planning or zoning matter. Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. Looks like there's no one in attendance for privilege of the floor. Uh, any correspondence or anyone online?
No.
No? Okay. Last chance for privilege of the floor. All right, we're going to close privilege of the floor and then move on to unfinished business. There is no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. First up is Resolution 2025 dash 25. This is a resolution for site plan approval for the modifications to Trusco Bank at 1475 Balltown Road.
Mike Roth. Stracher Roth Gilmore Architects, representing Trusco Bank.
Okay.
As you know, from last month's presentation, we're basically adding a new ATM to this facility.
Mr. Roth, could I just have you pause for one second?
Yes.
I typically read the resolution and then we're going to have a motion that I'm going to have you present part of it and then we'll come right back to it, okay? Great. Okay. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved, this Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby classify this application as a type 2 action under secret regulations and no further actions required. Uh, and further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds that the above referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code and therefore hereby plans this site plan with the following conditions. One, striping prior to completion of a building permit, parking lot and crosswalks shall be restriped to the satisfaction of the planning department. Two, landscaping prior to completion of the building permit, the health of the adjacent landscaping and existing landscaping shall be reviewed by the tree council and property owner together and any dead or dying of education will be replaced. Make it a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, moved by Ms. Beloski.
I have a second.
A second by Mr. Laflamme. Okay, we'll open this up to discussion.
Thank you. So I'm sorry. Again, Mike Roth, Stracher Roth Gilmore Architects, representing Trusco Bank. What you see there is actually a, an image of a, of another ATM that looks exactly like the one that is being put in there. There was a question as to what it's going to look like. Best I could do is I found one that's actually over in Albany and placed it into this building. That's what it amounts to. So what you're seeing is basically what's, what it's going to look like. The only issue that we have with the machine is in order to place it in this spot, we have to add seven inches to the island on the interior side of the island, which is the drive-through side. In turn, I could leave the concrete walk that's there, but it's just going to narrow down the drive. And when I was there, I saw people hitting the curb already, just with the current one. So we recommended taking the sidewalk out. We're going to pave it and put a couple of bollards along the building so that somebody doesn't drive into the building. And that's basically the essence of the, of the changes to the property.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Beloski is the project lead and I believe she conducted the site planning. And we'll have a recap of that.
So yeah, we went and took a look. It's tight.
Very tight.
Um, just a couple of questions. One of the things we talked about was potentially instead of trying to sort of create space under the canopy, if we can go back to the other picture, Laura, I think it gives a better picture, a better illustration. It's also very tight on the outside of the canopy for that lane right there. And when, when we looked at it with planning, wondered if this was an opportunity to sort of improve traffic flow overall. If you took out that, you can just see it to the far right, that first parking spot, you'd actually make it easier for the traffic that's not approaching the ATM to get into the parking lot. And you'd give yourself ample room for that seven inches on the backside of the cement. And we just, that would also kind of create a better guide for drivers if you were able to kind of maybe move the vegetation where the crosswalk is, not across the screen, but near that sidecar, if you were able to kind of space that out.
By, by the car.
Yeah, by the car.
That's there. I, I see no problem moving one of the parking spots and moving over the lane. And I mean, adjusting that line so it's wider. No question that it's tight already for both, for both.
Both lanes.
If we widen that lane and it's okay with you to lose a spot, I'll recommend that to them. I don't think there'll be a problem.
So you'll be able to maintain, that would eliminate the need to remove the sidewalk because you'd just be getting your seven inches.
I wouldn't change, we can't, unfortunately, we can't change the location of the ATM. All the power is, it's an existing ATM, all the power is coming to it. The, the vacuum tube is, is there.
Right, so we're just saying seven inches out instead of seven inches in.
Seven inches to the inside, to the, under the canopy.
And can you just explain, I think it'd be good for you to just explain on the record sort of why, in other words, why you need it on the inside versus just giving you those seven inches on the outside if we're creating more space?
It's because of the configuration of the ATM itself, okay? Has to be, it overha, it would over, it would actually overhang the existing curb.
So is it larger than the existing one?
In width.
In width?
Not this way, but in the thickness.
And again, just comparing it to TD Bank and Chase, which are the other two that are within kind of that circle. They're like much smaller. So can you, I don't know, can you speak to?
Unfortunately, Trusco has purchased this, this company that they deal with.
Okay.
They give me, they tell me what the size is and that's all I have to work with.
And the other, okay, I, I mean, I do think.
I apologize.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I do think that losing the spot and creating a better flow of traffic is a, is a good safety enhancement, regardless of whether it impacts the ATM. The other question we had, and perhaps you've looked into this already, if you remove the existing sidewalk that runs under the canopy along the building, does that trigger an ADA review? That was another concern we had.
Because what we're going to do is we're going to taper the, if you see that crosswalk right there.
Can you zoom in on that, Laura, maybe? Thank you.
I can go over and point to, yeah, that crosswalk right there. We're going to taper the, the asphalt right up to the edge of the pavement of the sidewalk.
Are you going to fill up?
We're going to, we're going to build that.
So the ATM, where the ATM curb is, is going to be.
Perp stays where it is.
But comes in seven inches.
Comes in seven inches.
And is that going to be the flush ground then?
It won't be, it'll still be a curb.
Okay.
Be like a four inch curb.
Okay.
The asphalt will go across and as you approach the building, it's going to raise up and it'll raise up to, to the top of the concrete walk right there. And then we'll put a strip there for handicap.
Door that's in the background left, I think you're referring to, being, would remain or be.
That's basically a service door.
Right.
And.
Yeah, no, I'm actually more concerned about the drop box, right? That's what the.
The drop box.
Currently, the sidewalk is providing access to the drop box?
I think the sidewalk was there before they even, before the drop box was.
Okay. So do we know for sure, Laura, in terms of code, if removing that side, existing sidewalk will cause, trigger a review of ADA accessibility? Yeah, I mean, it would as part of the building permit. Okay. It's something the building inspectors can work with the architect on. Okay.
Yeah, but the building inspectors have a, I'm sure they know what's being planned here, right? What's their input?
Um, they haven't seen a building permit. So they would, they would look at the sidewalk with an approach and everything as part of a building permit.
But just look, just by looking at this, I want to see if we're on the same page. If there was someone who was mobility impaired, there would be a flat surface that they could take from the tarmac along the building to the drop box and back.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
So how far will the existing, you're, you're going to pull the sidewalk out all the way to the building? Or you're going to leave a little bit of curb on that side where the bollards are now?
Well, can I go over and point this?
Yeah.
If you can make it.
We'll have you take, there's a, there's a microphone right over here you'll take with you and then we can capture all the conversation.
The climb will be a foot carry, sir. Almost see, you see this line here?
Yep.
From this point to approximately here, it'll taper down. That's basically it. And that taper will go all the way across to here. And when we get to this sidewalk, even though we, I don't feel we need handicap accessibility to that, we're going to taper level here and then taper back out. So that it's, this is only about three inches. Did you hear that?
Yeah, so, okay. And so the, the blacktop will go right up against.
Right against, right against the concrete.
And, and the brick wall all the way to the back.
Yes, yeah, because I don't want the water to run against the building. I want it to run away.
Yeah, that blacktop is going to have that slope throughout its entire. So that's, that's not ADA compliant.
No.
Well, definitely. I think the detectable warning strip that you talked about at the end of the sidewalk, I think is definitely required. The code review would have to determine if the service entrance needs to be adaptable as well. But sloping the asphalt up or ramping, I guess would be changing the grade of the asphalt because that's like photoshopped in right on that area, I think would address a bunch of items. You can see where the bollards are to keep you from, you know, getting close to the building. That's going to take its fair share.
There was discussion last, last month about not putting bollards there because of snow plowing and things like that. But it's under the canopy and I'd rather see them there rather than somebody hitting the building.
Okay.
Is there any problem with removing one parking space? I think the parking there was approved, sort of, as shared.
Um, we can check. I guess it could be sort of considered banked parking because that parking lot is never full. I drive by it like four times a day. So Clark and I could do the calculations, but I think it would be safe to at least bank that one parking spot so that cars could get in. Sarah and I did like a sort of rough measurement and it's a six foot, seven foot travel lane.
With a pretty tight turn.
Probably, you can actually see like.
The, the one that's adjacent to the parking.
On the outside of the.
Oh, you can't really see, but nobody is actually making this, this is all dirt. Like people are, their tires are going over where it's supposed to be grass and then over the edge of the sidewalk in order to make this turn here.
And you're saying that Trusco does not have a problem accommodating that change as part of this plan?
I mean.
If you see on my drawing for tomorrow, we submit it for building permit, we'll take care of it.
So we might go over to the parking lot, but I'm not think I'm completely done with the, with the sloped asphalt where there was once a sidewalk.
But isn't that, isn't that sidewalk currently flush pretty much with the asphalt?
No, it's, it's raised, but it's flat.
But not, not like a six inch curb, it's not like a six inch, right, right.
It's it's flat.
Yeah.
This asphalt is going to be slow, there will be, you know, people walking there, wheeling there to get to the drop box. Right, cars are actually going to be driving over.
Right, so.
That slope, right, is that proper?
People will be driving on that slope, right, yeah, yeah.
When you say slope, I'm not seeing it as a slope, I'm seeing it as a watershed.
It's very insignificant.
Right, we're talking just enough grades so it doesn't go down and erode the foundation of the, but just a watershed back to the center and then out.
Determine it is.
Will the rest of the driveway be re, will the, will that whole path be reasphalted as a matter of the project?
The whole sidewalk, what is underneath will all be asphalt.
And where the cars travel?
Yes.
All asphalt new.
Entire lane.
It could, it could be made degrade with a slight watershed, all, is it going to be all new asphalt?
So up to the new curb, check.
If it were all new asphalt and someone was doing that, my assumption would be they would make it so that there would be watershed, the whole thing would be raised a little bit and then pushed up, but if it's not going to be reasphalted, then there may be more than a watershed angle to that slope.
Well, there is slight slope as it stands now, but you can see it going up. So when they take that curb out, it's going to have to go up to the building, okay? And they'll, they'll taper it back out because the cars have sort of depressed, depressed the asphalt already. You know, just from the years of travel.
Which, which would get fixed if you replaced the asphalt in the entire lane. It would.
Right.
If you.
And can you, can you then explain that sidewalk would be removed and then the seven inches you're asking for on the inside? You're going to just add that to the existing island or there's, they're not taking anything out and replacing?
I mean, you're doing breaking and joining anyway on the island, right? So it's going to be hard pressed to think that that asphalt stays intact.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Mm hmm. All right, I guess the other question I had was, the sidewalks according to your drawing by the door in the back, the sections of that still remain? I- i- is that absolutely necessary because, so I wasn't there when you guys walked, but I was there. It's pretty tight for a car making that turn, I don't know, I don't know how a car would actually avoid clipping that sidewalk.
I mean, I think the existing sidewalk, you're saying that out of the service door is going to grade down with the the warning strip so that by the time the car's hitting it.
I mean, will the sidewalk be removed then replaced, or you're just planning on just putting?
To that joint, and then we're taking everything out beyond that.
Does that, I don't recall, does that sidewalk grade down right now?
Yeah, it's flat.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I I understand that the distance under current conditions is still the same. But now you're moving the island over seven inches and you've created a corner right where that sidewalk ends, right?
It's there numerous times, say.
Yeah.
When the car makes that turn, it's nowhere near that piece of sidewalk, even now. Now they'll have a little more room to be able to make the turn because somebody had mentioned from before.
Yeah, but not, I could believe you for now, but you're also going to increase that island width towards the building by seven inches. So a car is going to want, it's going to turn wider. It's going to start to turn a little sooner, and would that change the clipping of the sidewalk? If they're turning sooner, as as mentioned.
They won't be, they don't have to turn sooner, the island is staying.
Or, I'm sorry, turn later, they're going to turn later, seven inches later theoretically. On the, because the sidewalk's not there. Okay.
Yes, there's definitely going to be a wider, if you, or if you could scroll over to the land view on the right on that same drawing right here. Right there.
Correct.
So there's definitely going to be more clearance, and if you add the bollards in, which you've indicated in the, in the photograph that was included in the package there, I think the the net delta of the seven inches and the loss of the, of the sidewalk will be okay. You're probably not going to get near that back service entrance.
Yeah.
Close, but still, like we were talking about, the opposite side of the ATM on the, on the right hand side is really a tight, tight area. The eight, the ATM, the new one that was in the photograph, this will be partially over, I guess.
Overhanging?
Overhanging, it's not covered by the full canopy, correct? The current one isn't.
It's going in.
Oh, because it's going in. Okay.
It's going towards the building.
But your stub ups and everything that are currently underground and everything is positioned so that it's ATM, the new one will slightly be in border of the building. Okay.
Connectors are probably coming up exactly where they are, but the width of it brings it towards the building. So, I mean, I hear the argument about the sidewalk and, and I know on the plan drawing, the distances look like they make sense. But.
I mean, it has to go through the building permit process, so what we could do is add to the resolution, right? An amendment that it's approved as long as the removal and replacement of surface is ADA compliant with building code.
Yep, I mean, definitely at least for ADA, but like I said, it's going to be weird having that slope for cars to drive over.
Yeah, I think it would definitely be better if you paved the whole thing.
Me too.
Yeah.
The fact that there is an indentation creates more risk to this.
Mm hmm.
So I think the general consensus is, is that we'll make a, an amendment to this, so it'd be condition number three, that the removal of any sidewalks and subsequent modifications will be ADA compliant to the Town and Iskun building code. And paving will also shed water away from the building and those areas.
Yes.
Yes, okay, right, so I'll move to make that amendment?
So moved, I'll.
Second, okay, second by Ms. Belowski. Okay. All in favor state by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
But I, I'm wondering now if we're also adding in the request for the outer portion of the canopy? Since there's an agreement that that can be taken care of, can we also build that into the resolution?
There, there is removal of curb based on that picture, right? They would have to remove the curb and repave where the dirt is, where the sidewalk is on the outer lane, okay? And then, and then asphalt.
No, we're talking about over here now.
Removal of the parking spot.
This side.
On this side, yeah, there's curb there.
So yes, Ms. Belowski, if you want that, so if the idea is that fixes a problem, even if it's a different problem, let's amend the resolution.
Okay, so we'd amend the resolution to include removal of the first parking spot? Is that, I don't know how to properly label that. The first north of the ATM?
Yeah, it's definitely directly north.
Directly north to create a wider lane for traffic turning into the lot?
We'd also consider the removal of the concrete curb.
Yes.
To the, yeah.
As part of that.
And we, and then reasphalt. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable because we actually don't have a reference set of drawings that this amendment is referring to.
Yeah, I would agree if we're going to make that substantial of a change, I'd want to see that on a plan and and that the parking is not just for Trusco Bank, so if changing the parking, I don't know if that changes the scope of the project that you'd need a public hearing or input or or additional review, but I think the conditions about the sidewalk makes sense and would be fine with the resolution, but changing the physical parking seems substantial enough that I don't know if I'd want to wrap that into the resolution.
Potentially approval from the landlord.
We don't have a drawing we can reference.
So you could make a condition asking for that to be brought back to the planning board at a later date. You have done that, so that would allow the ATM to go in, but it would allow you to review the parking situation at a later date.
Let the planning office to review the parking.
But then we're eliminating the incentive.
Why is this so sensitive? Why is this?
I think that's Trusco driven.
The, the ATM is scheduled to go in Columbus Day weekend, we mentioned that at the last meeting. So what I'd like, if if possible, if they can install the ATM, take care of the sidewalks so they can make the later one, then I'll resubmit the drawing showing that we're going to change the other parking spot. If that's what you want, I don't, I I hopefully don't want to have another meeting.
You don't want to slow down the approval, I understand.
The incentive would be it's a condition under resolution, right? They could.
To return to the planning board with drawings, can we do that?
Okay, so enforcement is really hard to have a journey, so submit it before you pave, like we need to see it.
So we won't slow down the existing.
My concern, I'm sensitive to your timeframe, I feel like that's driven by Trusco or the landlord, and so I'm not, like, we want to play ball, but we also don't want to be in a position where the work that we need doesn't get done. So what assurance can you provide us besides, like, I'm worried that you'll get the part that Trusco wants done, but not the part that we want done?
I will talk to Trusco tomorrow, I'll have them produce a letter for you to say that they will take care of these additional items that you're asking for. Would that be sufficient?
And it's not, well, not really, and I'm, I don't want to call out anyone, but it's really hard for the town attorney, who's not me, to enforce that stuff, so like, we need to have some action on that sort of contemporaneously with the other work that you want to have get done, or else, you know, we're not going to give a CO for it, or it's not open. Like, there's got to be something more that you can offer us that we're not chasing Trusco down to have this work done.
What would you suggest?
Yeah, so Ms. Jess, you did suggest that we could, a condition that requires a submission of a new plan showing what happens to that parking spot and the curb associated with it prior to.
The project beginning.
Something, yeah.
We could do either, yeah, we could do prior to the closing out of the building permit because it takes a little while, but renewal of the building permit doubles every time. So if they're not able to close out the building permit until the adjacent parking space has been looked at, eventually they could be having like thousands, thousands of dollars of renewal fees.
Okay, that's fine, I get, I got, I don't want to put the town attorney in a situation where we're doing code enforcement to to get it done.
Yeah, I think if we did it prior to the closeout of the permit, that it can take a while, but it will. And I mean, you, we, we sometimes have like $3,000 renewal fees for permits that are outstanding.
Yeah, I mean, the, the risk error is that when you look at it from an engineering perspective, you might find that what we're talking about is not as doable as you originally think, right?
Does there need to be the drive through, the outside drive through lane, what's the purpose of?
Because you can access the rest of the plaza.
Right, but there's, there's all the way to access it before you get to the drive through. And if there's no ATM feature on the outside of it, right, it's all on the inside? So like, instead of getting rid of a parking space, could you add one and block that off?
No, but I don't think from the entrance coming off of Knott Street, there's no other way for people to.
Isn't.
I think they're.
Yeah, it's a lot. Yeah, I think that lane is necessary.
Yes.
So you understand where we're coming from, when we, we have a very tight and difficult corner that's been existing for a long time, so when we have the opportunity to make enhancements or improve something, that's what we're vetting out. I know that that wasn't, was touched upon, I think, at the last meeting, but it wasn't really a driving factor for something that we gave back to you in order to incorporate into this application. You know, the nine feet, it's not changing anything, the island width between that and the parking space isn't changing, correct? Okay, it is about nine feet, it is tight, so, I mean, I don't know if we necessarily, I, I don't, I don't like the the corner. I think if we could definitely find a way to to make it better, this would be the opportunity to do that. But again, you know, typically, we like to have a pretty thorough set of drawings that we respond to. It's better for the planning department, it's better for enforcement. Um, I know you're on a, on a time sensitive, a time sensitive.
Time frame.
Time frame, I don't know if there's a way to work with the building department to just get an application for the ATM itself, and then the site improvements come back after?
That's what I'm saying, I think you could, I think you could say, prior to the closeout of the building permit, a site plan modification for the north, closest northern parking spot, you know, shall be evaluated by the planning board. And then that requires that it actually comes to the planning board before you close out the building permit for the ATM. But you could install it because the building permit would be open, it would just be prior to closing it out.
So it wouldn't stop what they're trying to accomplish, we would just provide teeth to getting the drawings in time and enforcing the next stage.
Look at a full set of drawing.
Yeah, and and we're going to hope that the engineering works.
Yeah.
If it doesn't, because we should say evaluate, right? Because if for some reason it doesn't, then we could say, well, we looked at it and actually that parking watch, parking spot should stay.
There is that possibility.
So.
Um.
Go ahead.
I think there's another time issue. The paving has to be completed by when, because the plant's shut down like around November 1.
Where?
Yeah, depends on weather, depends on.
We will not guarantee they will be providing pavement.
Right.
After November 1, so if we can work this out, I'm okay with doing that. But I want to be sure we can afford to take that parking spot out.
Yeah, which we could have to evaluate, yeah.
Okay, so the condition would be an additional amendment to have drawings to evaluate.
Yeah, so I'd say prior to the closeout of the building permit, the applicant shall submit site plan drawings that address, you know, that corner and the northernmost parking spot to be evaluated by the planning board for possible removal.
Yeah.
Would you, would you rather, I mean, I can, I could talk to them, they could probably do it, because when they start cutting, they got the asphalt people there, I'd rather they do it all.
No, we'd have to look at the plan first.
That's the bringing back.
Yeah. You could get the ATM in.
And our next week is not till October 20th.
Yeah.
That's the least concern about paving.
The permit is open for a year, like before you even have to renew it, so you could do the work on the corner in the spring.
Certainly.
Just one additional thing to make attentional, do we have a code recommendation on what that lane width needs to be?
Usually it's 12 feet.
Good, so I think we should probably state that somehow that, so to, to, to have that northern side of the ATM meet the code lane requirement, 12 feet, and if it requires the removal of the parking spot, then so be it, right? I think we need to key off of a positive dimension.
Okay.
Probably have about 12 feet from the island right now to the outer edge of the walk surface.
Sure, so, so.
If you eliminate eight feet of a parking spot or nine feet, whatever the town required, you'll have plenty of room to make the turn and have the walk.
I, I think actually with that statement, not only does it bring it in line with something affirmative in the code, something dimensioned, but maybe you might actually figure out a way, it might actually minimize a bit of the cutting and working you have to do.
Yeah, we'll see what we.
Right, we don't want it to be any wider than what the code requires, we just need it to be.
Right.
That's what the code requires, so I think.
Yeah, you want to keep the kind of buffered striped area.
Right.
Between the next parking spot.
I think Laura, I think there's a sidewalk on the front side of cars, that's why that.
Yes.
Right, yeah, I think you kind of have to lose a panel of the sidewalk too, because that's sort of getting run over by the cars.
Yep.
Yeah.
Just to be clear, that what Laura was referring to with the, the concrete panel of the sidewalk that would need to be removed, that's what we need to have in the drawing.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The one of.
The one that would be adjacent.
Where the dirt is to the right behind that first car.
Northwest, so the, where the driver's seat would be who's passing that.
Coming out.
Right there, yeah, that's what we all need to see in the drawing, yeah.
Okay. So that'll be condition number four, so recap it here. So condition number four is prior to construction, applicant will. So condition number four is prior to construction, applicant will resubmit plans showing a minimum 12 foot wide with travel lane and modification to the north parking spot and curb area.
Yeah, are we going to say that, that to have the lane be code compliant?
As a code compliant.
Well, code compliant lane.
Uh, two-way driveways, driveways in general shall be 24 feet. One-way driveways in general shall be 16 feet. But I think you guys.
Code compliant might be pushing it too far.
Yeah, I'm more, I'm honestly more comfortable with 12, but.
12, yeah.
It's general performance standard. So I mean, I feel like that's something we'd evaluate.
Yeah.
So do we have a number in there then? Or are we just going to say to address the lane? Do you want to put 12 feet in?
I feel like we could reference the code standards that we could look at, but maybe not the actual width of the lane.
Okay, yeah, I, I'd be comfortable with that.
All right, so that's, um, section 220-19 I 1.
Okay. So condition number four will read, prior to construction, applicant will resubmit plans showing a travel lane compliant with code standard 220-19 point I, point 1, and modifications to the north parking spot and curb area. Okay.
So what, what did the code dimension say?
16 feet.
So I mean, at the end of the day, he's got about nine now, plus another nine in the parking lot, plus the crosswalk, right? He could get there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be close.
Right. So I have, we have, I have a, a call for a motion for modification number four.
So you're going to move, right?
I'm going to move it.
Okay.
Okay, a second.
A second.
Okay. All in favor of modification number four, please state by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. So now we have a modified resolution. Are there any other discussion items? Okay. Ms. Bergami, could you please call the roll on the modified resolution 2025-25 at Trusco Bank ATM?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Ms. Strain?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Ms. Belofsky?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Mr. Millsba?
Aye.
Chairman Darpino?
Aye. Okay, the resolution passes.
Thank you, Mr..
Thank you for working on this. All right, next up is resolution 2025-26, a resolution for site plan approval for a tenant change to Maison Kitchen at 4240 Consul Road. Ms. Strang is the project lead. Okay. And good evening. All right, the resolution. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that the planning board and zoning commission hereby determine that this project will not have a significant effect on the environment, hereby directs the town planner to file a negative secret declaration as noted above with the Part III environmental assessment form findings attached to this resolution and made part of hereto, and be it hereby further resolved that the planning board and zoning commission finds the above referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code and therefore hereby approves this site plan with the following conditions. One, prior to issuance of a signed permit, area variances must be approved by the zoning board of appeals for any non-compliant signs or zoning compliant signage package shall be submitted to and approved by the planning department. Two, if during a five-year evaluation period, the planning board determines that additional parking spaces are required, the applicant will work with the planning board to construct a curb along the corner of Consul Road and Ferris Road and two additional parking spaces there. Three, prior to the final CO, the applicant shall construct a dumpster enclosure around the existing location of the dumpster to contain trash and improve aesthetics. Four, in the future, the applicant shall strive to add landscaping to the property to better define the parking lot of the bakery from Consul Road and Ferris Road. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Strang?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gold. Okay. Open up to discussion.
Can I just ask, but if you had any indication as to what you were going to construct the dumpster enclosure with? I mean, there's been, there's masonry or there's, there's other types, but what was your idea for doing that?
Um, I, so I was thinking either wood panels with a door, a wide enough door, obviously. Um, or I, I personally think that looks the best. Something, a color that matches what we decide to paint the brick. Something along those lines.
I, I would just encourage you to make sure that it's real durable, since it's going to be.
Yeah, that area and the usage will be intense there. Yes, agreed.
Um, condition four, uh, I guess I was a little confused about um, the nonspecificity of it, and should it be more like the, the standard um, meeting with the tree council condition, or what was the intent of that condition?
Um, yeah, I added that in there. I think it's because during discussions, we talked about different ways of delineating Consul and Ferris. But I think at this time, the applicant is trying to get the store up and running. So we typically use the strive condition as a reminder of something we'd like to see, but isn't required.
Yeah, the corner plot that, uh, square, I would like to add some kind of landscaping there. The property itself is all concrete, so we can't really add too much. Um, once, if we ever find out where the line is along, I think the west side of the building, the, um, I would like to take care of some of the landscaping there, but we're not going to dig through the concrete or anything like that, or the asphalt currently, so.
And the tree council actually did review this, and they recommended trying to add a tree to the box if it could fit, but I think we decided that it doesn't fit.
I think it would block traffic also with that corner, so I don't want anything that'll be too tall, something a little lower, like.
But a visual cue to the corner.
Something, yeah, something to help make it look a little prettier, so, yeah.
So I guess my question is, is it necessary if it's not, the only way it would happen is if number two happens, right?
It isn't a necessary condition. It just sort of captures, um, conversations we've had, but you could strike it. There's nothing binding about it.
The only thing I'd add with the dumpster is that there's, uh, I think on page three of our packet, talked about if you had to have future parking, that it would be moved to the corner. Um, I would fully support keeping it on the rear of the property, even if it's on the backside and the other side. Where, wherever you could keep it off of the corner of Consul Road.
So off of, because right now where it is, I plan to keep it there.
Correct.
Yeah, so you're saying.
Don't move it towards this, any further closer to the street, okay?
I want it, I want it there. I think it's the best for traffic. It's the best, it doesn't interrupt parking, and it's far enough for if there's outside seating, then you're not eating right next to dumpster. So, yeah. Agreed.
You couldn't actually see the, that's the existing square thing in the county plan.
Yeah, yeah, right there.
It's probably the best location for there not to be illegal dumping of other people's stuff there.
Yeah.
Great.
Other discussion?
I'm going on my phone.
Okay.
Chairman Ross shall be recusing from the vote.
Okay. And just to recap, signage is a separate, uh, going to be separate?
Yes.
From this, okay? So, when that's worked out.
I'm sorry, we didn't make the condition that if she has code compliance signage, we just go through planning.
Yes.
My, like, this department.
If I ever wanted out another one or whatever, I would go through a variance. Agreed.
Okay, um, there's no further discussion. Ms. Bergami, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme?
Aye.
Ms. Strain?
Aye.
Ms. Belofsky?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Hi.
Mr. Millsba?
Aye.
Chairman Darpino?
Aye, resolution passes, all right.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Hey, next up is resolution 2025-27, a resolution for site plan approval for new signage for GE Vernova at One Research Circle. Uh, Ms. Belofsky will be chairing this, as I will be recusing.
So I'll read the resolution first. Uh, be it hereby resolved that this planning board and zoning commission does hereby classify this application as a type-two action under secret regulations and no further action is required. Further resolved that the planning board and zoning commission finds the above referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code and therefore hereby approves this signage site plan. Tom, can you just kind of recap for us what's happening for the record?
Yep, so basically, we're going to do some new signs over at the, uh, K West site, um, starting with the road. There's a monument sign out by the road, and that's actually going to be the only sign that's visible for, for anybody unless you are an employee or allowed to go on the site. There's a guardhouse you got to get past.
And it mirrors the existing sign that's there, correct?
There's no sign here.
Oh, there's not, okay.
Nope, there's just a, a road with a guardhouse and no sign at all, so you don't, really don't know where you are. So it's just going to be parallel to the road in front of the guardhouse.
It kind of mirrors the Balltown Road sign.
That's right, okay.
And then once you continue on, there's going to be a, a sign on the building. There's a recess in the building, going to do some reverse lit channel letters there. That's what that picture is. There's, uh, the fan blade sign, or, or the sign, the building name, oh, there's the fan blade. Um, so that sign's supposed to look like a, a fan blade off of a, a wind turbine. The split is where the sidewalk goes between it, reverse lit letters on that as well. There's the building name sign. Uh, we don't know what the building name is yet, but that's a placeholder for now.
I think that's it.
That's it.
And so I would just add, this is, um, can, it's consistent with the previous application that was submitted, and there's consistency. So the project really brings the signage up to standard kind of across the campus and provides better wayfinding, correct?
Yep.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd say this is consistent with some of the other, other like mega campuses signage packages we've looked at. You know, a lot of these are internal that you're not, that the general public's not going to see. So I think, yeah, I think it all looks fine.
Okay. So hearing none, no more discussion, we can, uh, ask if the resolution be yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
I hope this is not going to cause an issue, but I'm going to need to recuse from this one also from voting, so we still have quorum and.
Yeah, we still have a quorum.
Yep.
It's GE Vernova, though.
The property is actually.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, so Ms. Bergami, we call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme?
Aye.
Ms. Strain?
Aye.
Ms. Belofsky?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Mr. Millsba?
Aye.
Okay, resolution passes. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that's it for new business. So we'll move on to discussion items. First up is 3406 Albany Street, site plan application requiring area variances for a special use permit for the operation of a religious education facility at a single-family home.
David, do you know if there was a motion in a second, or sorry, Sarah? Was there?
That was my concern, that we didn't do a motion in a second.
Second on that.
I don't think we did, correct? Okay. So I'll move, and can I get, I'll move the resolution? Can I have a second? Thank you.
Okay, so Sarah and Nancy.
Right.
Nancy.
Thank you.
Okay.
Should we call the roll again?
Yeah, call the roll again.
Yeah.
Mr. Laflamme?
Aye.
Ms. Strain?
Aye.
Ms. Belofsky?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Mr. Millsba?
Aye.
Sorry, thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, uh, 3406 Albany Street. Uh, so we had the public hearing, um, a couple of comments by some residents and also, uh, from the owner himself. So in the packet, we have a timeline, and so our next step is we're going to make a recommendation to the ZBA, so that's the next step. If, yeah, thank you.
We actually have, sorry, we actually have the next step as you're making the recommendation of the town board on the special use permit. So the variances for the zoning board are building permit related and not specific to the site plan.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, we made sure that the actual special use permit slash site plan doesn't need area variances for the lot size, and the review from the town attorney said, no, it, the town board will actually note, or we can make sure that the town board notes any deficiencies. Those are understood when they're granted for the special use permit for two uses on the lot. So the reason that the prop, the project has to go to zoning board is because when they got the building permit issued for the garage, it was issued for the footprint of the rear, and it went a little bit farther, which does happen during construction, um, not that often, but it does happen. And, um, I don't think it would be wrong for the planning board to do a recommendation of zoning board because it's going through site plan, but technically, that is a building permit issue.
Okay.
So I think if we.
Maybe it would be wrong for us.
If the planning board is not required to do it, I don't think we should.
Yeah, probably, that's probably, actually.
Okay.
Because it's actually related to the footprint of the structure from when the building permit was issued.
All right.
Yeah.
So the dual path is the applicant is going to zoning. Right?
It is a dual path.
Correct, it's, it's a dual path, okay. Okay, so, um, in that construction timeline that we have here with the zoning board that's coming up here, uh, we had the public hearing, and then we are working on the recommendation to, to the town board. So I think takeaways from this, let's start with just some of the, the basic items. So the, the parking on site, uh, we've got the agreement to bring some of that parking inboard on the property with the use of construction pavers that'll also help eliminate some of the hardscape paving that, that's there. Um, the encouragement of not parking in front of the property on Albany Street would be in front of the house. And then, uh, the back area, which has that shared concrete pad, is not counted in towards that. So there's a, there's a written agreement also with Upstate Guns and Ammo across the street. Um, we did talk about a little bit of the traffic that's there. We have acknowledged the fact that even though there is a written agreement there, that is not a, a deed transferable item that could be there, but it does sound like there's, um, some other shared parking from other owners that are, that are in that vicinity as well. Any other concerns or anything that we've talked about specific to parking?
No, I, I mentioned this in the past, just in general with not overbuilding parking and with the, you know, the written agreement with Guns and Ammo, the unwritten agreement with the coffee shop. I mean, I think it seems unnecessary to overbuild parking on this lot. If we can put that into our recommendation and let the town board, you know, look at that as part of the special use, uh, but to me, it sounds like parking's a non-issue.
Yeah.
Sure, yep.
Yeah.
And like, as a reminder, there was a kind of a code matrix that Clark sent you guys out for considering how to calculate the parking. Um, and there's a couple of different ways to do it. One is by like maximum occupancy, which I think we decided wouldn't be appropriate here because it's something like 20 parking spaces or it's a lot. And then by floor area or by seating, and I think what we decided to do was by floor area. Because you make sure that we're acknowledging that we're using the floor area to calculate the parking, although there are like multiple choices. I think this is one area where Ralupa does say if there's like kind of multiple ways to choose to evaluate something, that you want to use the least restrictive because it's a religious facility. But we do want to make sure that you guys have all looked at that matrix and you're comfortable with us using the floor area.
I think actually the floor area makes sense, or a type of usage just placelessly.
Yeah. Just going back to the, the ZBA, so they're, they're going to be taking a look at this. Because it's a building permit issue, is there, is there anything that would trigger, I know where the location is, sort of, that, but is the actual use of the building compared to what the, it was applied for as a garage being used as, I guess, a place of assembly? What is that determination? Is, you know, there's only one door in there? Is there going to be a secondary egress?
Um, yeah, so those are all things that the building inspector has to work, and Clark has been giving this building plan, doesn't actually, he's been working with Tom on like if there has to be bathrooms and things like that. Um, and I guess when I said like the structure of the building being closer to the lot lines is an issue that came about from the survey, like our understanding was that the rear of the building was actually put back in the exact same spot. And we found out from the survey that it didn't. But it may still need a planning board, uh, recommendation anyway, because like to your point, it isn't a garage anymore. So because it is a site plan, we'll just double check, but I think that's why Clark and. So because it is a site plan, we'll just double check, but I think that's why Clark and I had it in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just don't want the applicant to be surprised that if this comes back. We've talked about it a little bit in a couple of meetings, but I think the more research that the town is doing on this, the more information that we're finding. And, you know, you've done a lot of great work on the building, but it's only functioning as just one entrance, so.
Yeah, so it might be worth it, Dan, or um, one of the church people to reach out to the building department. Uh, actually, we have an app, a long time ago applicant here who went through this exact same thing. The planning board can approve a plan, but then it goes to the building department and you may need to have building code requirements that can add you know, significantly to what you're doing. Like, I think we're fairly certain you need to provide a bathroom. So you're gonna have to figure out like how that will fit in with the code. The planning board can say, yep, this use is good, that site plan's good. You do still have the final step of a building permit and that's kind of what we were talking about with the Trusco Bank as well. You will have to meet the building code for place of assembly.
I just wanted to have that. Thank you, Laura. That, just wanted to make that crystal clear. So what we're reviewing, what our parameters are is how far we take that and then the other necessary steps that you're gonna encounter formally.
Site size and the location of the building, can we apply the BZA to waive some of these other requirements?
So typically, those are not zoning code requirements. They're building code like um, New York State. So the only people that could waive those is the appealed in New York State. Our building inspectors can't waive the building code.
Question is, this was intended not to become, you know, full service places, just a covered place where they could pray and consequently, we didn't plan on any bathrooms. Putting the second exit in is something we have to do. But they didn't plan on any insulation or bathrooms in the building at all, so.
So I don't know that the bathrooms have to be in the building.
Yeah.
I think it may qualify for the bathrooms to be in the house as long as there's like a path to them. And I think that the path has to be ADA accessible.
So uh, my question is, if uh, the garage, the modified building is about already set up, uh, apply for the one bedroom. So uh, how about we, uh, um, one bedroom, what you mentioned, uh, in the old primary residence?
Right.
Is it possible to?
I think so, like from based on, um, we had this question for um, actually this building on Balltown Road a long time ago. I think so, but that's just something that you would want to know ahead of time with the building inspector. Like, we're just letting you know, you, I think you're making a lot of progress with the planning board right now. Um, but you probably wanna keep in mind your building permit process as well. Yeah. Just so you don't get blind sighted by something that we didn't identify.
Right, typically, a new building would require an energy audit. Um, there, there, there would be things that just, it's not just a pavilion. If if it was an open air pavilion, I think this would be a much different discussion. But it's, it's, it's an enclosed building.
Excuse me, sir, can we get the, all this document, what we need in writing so that we can follow and then we can follow which way we can reach, for example, this building permit and then this bathroom and how many and then what are the things that we need to fix?
Yeah, so.
In writing.
Right, well, um, what you typically do is, I think you're far enough along that you could schedule a meeting with a building inspector. One of our building inspectors have been doing sites like this for a really long time, Tom Canizzo, and he's probably the one that would be the best one to have a meeting with. Um, and then he can work with you on how to get those accesses of what you need. Um, typically what he'll do is kind of just highlight and copy sections of the code for you, so it will be in writing, but it wouldn't normally be like a, a list from Clark. It's a different type of thing when you go and meet with a building inspector. Yeah.
But in conjunction with that, because I think that's going to have a lot of information that you may have to comply with. We will, we're gonna keep moving forward with this application as far as what our recommendation is gonna be to the town board. Thank you.
So Mr. Hersh, will you be able to set up a meeting with Mr. Canizo? With the group? I think it's probably worthwhile to do that sooner than later.
We know.
Yeah.
Turn room in the home could be used to satisfy that requirement? Whether or not it's late, the building or things like that, or is its use unheated, uninsulated space, okay?
Yeah, those kind of questions.
Yep.
If, if that building doesn't have facilities to it, would it be used in the winter, in January and February?
Yeah, yes, we plan to use, we uh, have a plan to set up the um, dual, the uh, cooler and the, this heater. So, um.
Like a space heater?
For this.
Like a space heater?
Um, not a space heater, just.
You, you have it, you're, you're referring to a temporary, a temporary heating system, which.
Yeah.
Heater to, to change the air temperature inside, you have to buy energy code also provide adequate insulation on the wall.
Yeah, I think, I think separate from this process, I think you need to have that meeting with the building.
Just so you know, cause you're following with the planning process, but it's probably good to get ahead of the building process too. Yeah.
So we're gonna call for our recommendations to the zoning board at the next meeting, right?
zoning board and town board.
And town board.
Yeah.
So we are.
I, I, we have to make a recommendation of zoning, right?
So I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'll double check you guys, but I'm it originally started as a building permit issue and it isn't actually related to the special use permit, but because the building is being used as a place of worship, then we probably should do a recommendation, even though it's not the use that's at stake with the zoning board.
Correct.
I'll just double check it, just to make sure.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know the answer.
Okay.
My, my gut feeling is that because it's not being used as a garage, it is a referral from the planning board as part of the zoning. But let's find out the real answer.
Okay.
So in the interim, when Mr. Hess or or Ms. Vannan is going through to find that out, if we have to skip that process, I think we would be fine with that because we understand what the parameters are. But in the event that we do have to do that, we should be prepared to get that so we're not missing another meeting. We have one meeting in October, one meeting in November. So we wanna obviously keep this moving along at whatever the pace is. And then we obviously are gonna work on that special use permit recommendation as well. So a lot of moving parts, but we're hopefully giving you information that you can take back with you to at least get into construct of what the next steps are.
Right, and then especially use permit, we'll need to identify a set of findings.
Correct, yep, just like we just did with thirty nine hundred C Street, which is um, scheduled for tomorrow.
Yep.
Yeah, so we would have on the twentieth, recommendation to the town board and potential recommendation to the ZBA.
Is there gonna be draft findings before that for us to take a look at or?
Yeah, the project we can.
Yeah, um, I know that Laura and Clark and I have kind of emailed back and forth and talked several times about what we're.
Yep, there's any help you need there, I'm willing to. And um, and I'm also with Mr. Millsbaugh that I think banked parking and minimal installation of parking, I think we're fine, but I strongly recommend if you also can get something from the coffee shop in writing. Right?
Sure.
And and maybe we might need to consider, because it's not deed restricted in any way, we might need to consider if something happens that then triggers them coming back to the planning board. Right, if something happens with either the upstate guns and ammo or a coffee shop property, the.
Great, we can. Um, the way that we're calculating the parking demands is by the average use.
Yeah.
So by code, because we're doing the average use and we're using the square footage of the property, those parking spaces aren't needed. We're considering that kind of like their carrot festival where they are now parking in Agudadakim. So I mean, I think we can think about making a note of it, but.
Yeah. Okay. Something that, and I would strongly recommend, right, especially in light of the one letter we received.
Right.
It's there in the record that utilize the parking spots that you have available to you and not the streets, not Gasner and not Albany Street, right? Albany Street's gonna be very difficult to park on it, but.
Yeah, written letter said that there was parking on the side streets was problematic sometimes.
Where they made a weird letter?
Oh, no, that just came in today. I can send you guys the letter that came in today. Yeah.
Any other uh, comments or discussion items?
I'd just like to say that um, so often at public hearings, um, we see lots of folks show up who are not in favor and for having such a small organization. I think it speaks to who you folks are, that you've had so many people come out in favor and I think that's pretty great.
All right, thank you. Okay, next up is thirty four sixty one State Street, a site plan application for exterior modifications including new lighting at Trusco Bank. Mr. Roth? Discussions, you're up next.
Speak to you later.
Go ahead.
Mike Roth again, Strackler Gilmore Architects. Basically, what we're presenting today is, and I, we've already submitted the lights. They would like to put LED lights around the edge of the roof edge. I gave it, what you see here is an example of their headquarters and the lighting that they have been using, and that's exactly the same lighting. I did it on a rainy night so you could sort of see the reflection that would be. On a non-raining night, there wouldn't be any reflection to speak of. Um, the only time those lights would be changed is during the holiday, basically.
Um, in addition to the project, there's some exterior upgrades. Looks like there's some masonry repointing, some caulking.
Basically, there's a couple of sills that are loose, some building and a couple of pieces of block on the, on the retaining wall they have to fix up. It's basically it. They're trying to clean it up, clean it up.
Great. So this zoning, which is in uh, the commercial highway, has I guess less restrictions than other uh, commercial neighborhood or or town center overlay districts. So I guess in, in the past on previous projects, we're, haven't been big fans of perimeter LED lighting around cornices, uh, not really commonplace in in Niskuna. I'm gonna open up to some board discussion here as far as where the location is and uh, some of the images that we have here on on the building.
And then also the one big ask from Complete Streets was that this is one section of side, this is basically the only section of sidewalk on Balltown Road that doesn't connect. So if they're looking at getting some lighting improvements, we'd like to see the sidewalk connected along Balltown Road.
I, I was just gonna say that it's what quarter mile from another application that was proposing similar strip lighting that was not in favor of. So I guess just point that out. And I guess, just maybe you don't know, but would this be similar to like the lighting that's at the Seven Brew near the Home Depot? Okay, I, I don't know if anyone's driven by that, but that, me, looks like what, what that would, yeah. Like that would be if anyone wanted to get an idea of what blue LED strip lighting looks like.
Yeah, Architectural Review Board looked at it and they did felt like it was distinguishable from the project across the street and thought it might make the building look a little more crisp.
That is good feedback, actually, because there is a difference between this lighting and the other applicant's lighting and colors and.
Although, I don't know that you can distinguish colors generally. It's sort of like saying, you can have this restaurant, but not that restaurant. I don't know. Unless, unless, unless it's outlined in the code. So like across the street, they want earthy tones, so obviously red in a place where our zoning code calls out earthy tones, you know, neon red isn't an earthy tone, but.
Right, I mean, I'm thinking like, this isn't too far from the new Taco Bell. It's not too far from Wendy's, which those are, you know, more logo signage, but are not exactly subtle.
I mean, the challenge, I'm thinking the same thing, is in proximity to their neighbors on a state street environment. Is it, how, how do we interpret? Like, how do we follow our code?
Yeah, it's a unique location.
It's unique.
It's a unique location and how it points at that end of state in Balltown.
So, so I find that we can have some flexibility and doesn't, at this location where the lighting is concerned for all the points that we mentioned. What I'm actually way more interested in is, I think we'd like to have a sidewalk there.
Yeah, sidewalk.
A sidewalk out on the street?
Yeah, because it's actually the only spot where there's no, it'll complete the sidewalk in that section of Balltown Road.
Balltown. The State Street sidewalk's fine.
Yeah.
If you walk down Balltown Road, the sidewalk stops when it gets to Trusco Bank, then there's like a muddy herd path and then it starts up again at the gas station.
And and that is a precedent of the board, right? Reside a mark others in the past.
Yeah, we mean them have sidewalks.
There seems to be popular demand for making that sidewalk, yes.
Are all Truscos, are they all coming to this lighting theme? Are they, are they, are all of the Trusco branches um, evolving to this particular lighting theme where they, they're, they're outlining the top with those?
Well, that's town center overlay, right? You're gonna get another.
Yeah, that'll have to.
You're gonna get.
Too. Another thing about that, this is a standalone building. I know in our discussions, you know, across the street, we had said it may have been a different discussion if it was a standalone building, but it was a shared building. The one on Notch Street is a shared building as well.
I mean, I actually think that the lighting is um, not a bad. Given its location, I actually don't think that this additional lighting is a bad thing. I think having it better lit is beneficial.
Considering what's in that area, this isn't any of the same way as uh, the previous application where I had other issues anyway with that. But that was connected building and if they each wanted to go up with a different color, it was gonna look really awful.
These would stay on all night? And would they stay on all night? So I guess maybe on the outlier here, I.
A timer, a timer.
Yeah, I, I'm not a fan of, I guess, the band with lighting that goes around the top for a, a few reasons. One, I think if these start to become precedent, you're gonna see more and more. One of the other things that we've seen on recent projects is they include lighting or downlighting and with LEDs, as you know, the, the potency and the amount that you can put in for, you know, very little energy usage can really light up something pretty, pretty bright. And there's projects that have been constructed where we don't really vet out some of the lighting that's on the building and calling out for a lighting plan and then they get built and then all of a sudden it looks like, you know, almost like a spaceship's landing because they've got so many lumens that are on the property. If there's a way, like we just had a couple applicants that have talked about timers, if there's a way that we could work that into, I think that might be something that's reasonable and workable. You probably will have the logo backlit, correct? And then, and then some other, yeah, some other, like, you know, you've got accent lighting that's around there. You know, maybe if they, those stay on till ten o'clock or something and then they're off or then they're on during the day and they cast a little bit of a glow or you get an overcast day or something, it would be an enhancement, not something that would just be there, you know, twenty four seven, always on.
And that's, that's why I pointed out the, the Seven Brew, if you get a chance to drive by that, because it is like a spaceship when you drive by it.
Yeah.
So, but to your point, if it was like twenty five percent the intensity, then maybe it would be, you know, not as, you know, obtrusive and more appealing.
Yeah.
Is that disconnected, you home D?
Yes.
Yeah.
I've, I haven't been there in a while.
Yeah, the, the, like the band, like the band lighting that's at the, like right below the logo on the canopy. You know, I think those are, that, that works out well where the signage is. I think that pulls it all together. Then you get the band light up at the top and it, you know, it just. and it, you know, it just, it, it's tough for me to, okay, go ahead.
I agree with you.
I think I, I'm pretty sure they can control the amount of lumens to come off there. I, I don't see a reason why they couldn't put the timer on it.
Right.
Well, again, I will pass it on.
Yeah. Yeah, if we, if we got a little bit of information on the actual lighting fixtures themselves, what the controls are. Was that in the, it was on the? There's the elevation and then right, then you had the three pieces of the code. I don't recall the. Yeah. Because then if you can adjust, if you can adjust those down to, I don't know, make up a number, thirty five percent or something, which isn't as bright and then right as a condition, we could take a look at that.
And if we're taking notes of sections of the code to update, the metal highlight section might be a, a line to strike from the code.
What?
And a sidewalk.
Yeah, we're big fans of sidewalks here. Okay.
That's right, just move it down the road.
Great.
Sidewalk equilibrium.
Okay, great. So this is a new project. We definitely could have a project lead on this one. I think this is relatively straightforward. We can gather some information. We got a decent amount of time between the, you know, and the next meeting. So if anyone's interested in being project lead, just reach out to the planning department and myself. Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, this, in the next planning session?
Yeah, so if you give us the information and the due date would be ten days, ten days, I think around the tenth, I think it is.
Yeah, let me, I just.
Tenth or eighth, I can't remember what, where it falls on the calendar, but there's a October eighth would be the deadline for.
When would the planning board be?
We meet on the twentieth.
Twenty.
Twenty seven?
Twentieth.
Two zero.
Twentieth. Unfortunately, I will.
Okay. Oh, or if you wanted to send, if you wanted to send a representative or something, you could, you could always do that as well.
Yeah.
I think you can, but there might be.
Yeah.
Use a pencil, too.
Okay, that's up to you. That's our next meeting is. All right, thank you.
Land the sidewalk.
Okay, next up is four twenty Balltown Road, a site plan application for new signage at Community Bank. This is a new project and the applicant is online, correct?
Yeah, she's online.
Okay.
Go, you can, yeah, Chrissy, go ahead.
Okay, you can go ahead and, go ahead and present, introduce yourself, please present the project.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so my name is Chrissy or Christine Bratchefaro. I am here on behalf of SignPro who is doing the signage for Community Bank at four twenty Balltown Road. The site plan application is for the signage for the new building. There are three internally illuminated wall signs on the north, south, and west elevations. Also proposed is a wayfinding sign within the parking lot itself directing towards the drive through ATM. And there is some door vinyl that shows the store hours and some drive through regulatory signage, like clearance and do not enter signs also proposed.
So this is a brand new building that's going up in place of the, it was in the form of Taco Bell. So it looks like the, the signage package that was submitted is compliant as far as on the building, which is always good to see. Yeah, thank you, Laura. So two large facade signs and then there is a, those are signs, we'll call them sign type A. Sign type B is the one on the west facade. Okay. And then the other ones are directional signage that are located around the property and I believe it's like the ATM canopy.
Correct, yeah, the other ones are on the ATM canopy besides the freestanding sign.
Okay. Laura, no issues with the logo, correct, on any of the signs? Is that correct?
No.
As far as the logo and then the other orange signs that have some of the.
Although it's okay, it's, um, it's actually just usually one color, maybe two max, and it's less than thirty percent.
Do we allow that many colors? Seems to have a lot of colors going on.
Two.
She shared the full palette, but I think the signage is limited. It's just orange and black.
Yeah.
It's, um.
There's two colors.
Yeah.
So I thought I. It's only black, orange, and white for the actual signage. They like to include the entire brand color for design purposes, I suppose.
Okay.
You're probably right, you're looking at.
And then the other, the other signage that's on the doorways, we actually don't have any, we don't have any preference over that, right?
It has to be put on the inside of the glass.
Correct.
And there's no issue with the count of the directional signs, right?
Um, I don't think so. Directional signs are more at the discretion of the planning board. You know, they're allowed to be at each entrance and then direct internal traffic, so it's kind of up to you if you feel they've overdone it or it's good.
Matt felt it was.
But yeah, looking at, yeah, that, thank you, Laura, page three of sixteen has that breakdown of the chart and the locations where they are, looked pretty straightforward.
I do think I may have covered up the location of the freestanding wayfinding sign with my little chart there. So it, it should be like directly under the chart in, you can see it in the render where it will be on the island. Uh, but you can't see it on the little breakdown I made, unfortunately. Apologies for that.
Yeah, it shows in the rendering.
All right, here, yeah, there you go.
Since we're commending applicants tonight, it's good to see a sign package that's compliant. So thank you for that.
Nice to hear. Thank you.
Okay.
It seems to be coming right along, by the way. Building.
Yeah, I, I think there's been more work since the photos we have in our drawings for sure. Uh, so I apologize, those are a little bit older and the Taco Bell image that is no longer there, but it's pretty similar to what was there, so.
I didn't have any other comments or review comments.
Just a question from my benefit. Is there a reason that this didn't have to go through a tenant change review or site plan before?
Oh, it did. It's actually been, I think, two years since they had their.
Okay, so, yeah, because it said initial application, that's why I was.
This one, Clark checked for us. A lot of times if it's code compliant signage, we say it can be approved by the planning department, but they had no idea what their sign package was when we did tenant change. So this one specifically said the signs had to come back from the planning board. Yeah.
And then that just, that plan actually reflects the modifications we had talked about where the parking is. Some stuff in, integrated some more green space. It looks like it's from the existing condition photos that's being, as well.
Yeah, we, they were, if you guys remember, they were actually amenable to removing more parking spaces, but they couldn't get the cross easement agreement owners to let them.
Okay.
One of us was not surprised at that.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Okay, so I think this is pretty straightforward. I believe what we'll do is we will call for a resolution for the next meeting based on the sign application package. All right.
Understood, thank you.
All right, well, thank you. All right. That wraps up discussion.
We're good with the illumination on the signs, right? Everything's.
The backlit sign is just, just the two.
Yeah, I'm just, just asking for completion. I think they're fine. Yeah. Okay, sorry.
I, I guess a point of clarification from the, can we check the previous application just to make sure if there were any exterior light fixtures that were part of this package?
With Trusco?
With, no, with Community Bank. Because we, I know we tabled the signage on there, but I don't recall at the entrances or anything like that, if they had any. I don't recall any lumens package or anything like that, but maybe we should just double check if they had any.
It was a pretty, yeah, we'll go see what we have.
Right.
Good call.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so that wraps up discussion items. Moving on to reports.
Um, so yeah, my only report is that the Conference of Plan Committee is trying to wrap up the updates to the Conference of Plan by December of twenty twenty five. And typically, the planning board has held a public hearing on the Conference of Plan. They're gonna try and have like a real rough draft by the end of October that they could share with you guys. On, we'd like to see a public hearing on it here and at the town board, if that's okay with you guys. So it would probably be your November meeting. And then based on the comments that we get at your meeting and at the town board meeting, we'd wrap those all together for the end of December.
I mean, the conference run is big enough, so I think two public hearings and two venues is right.
Yeah, there's, there's a, a bunch of updates from the format that we're familiar with right now. They've expanded on some of the, I guess they'd be called.
Storage preservation.
Yeah, historic preservation was one. What, what do we call them in the, they're a.
Heritage districts.
Oh, yeah, not that specific, but just the, the areas that we have.
Oh, yeah, the neighborhood narratives.
Yeah, the neighborhood narrative. So they've, they've built on what's there. So it's, it's the similar template that we've seen, but they've expanded on several of the topics that are in there and bolstered some, have updated things from the last ten years. Looked at things that we're definitely tracking as far as things that we've been seeing in planning and zoning and, and working those things into the plan. So a good thing is connectivity throughout the town where, you know, two thousand and three, you might have never requested a bike path or sidewalks and now every applicant comes in and that's an asset that you see they want to have connectivity, they want to have connections to certain things. So they've been working, you know, pretty diligently on trying to update all of those topic areas.
Did they say anything about short term rentals or that's, since it's covered in the code, it's.
We did just do the land use chapter and we do want to add, we haven't written it in yet, but we do want to add a little bit on short term rentals, just to be in conformance with essentially what the code update already was, just that, that goal.
So, yeah, there should, I mean, I'm asking because there should be.
It should have conformity, yeah, consistency, yeah.
That's another thought in terms of short term rentals, I continue to monitor Milton Keynes and I think they may have discontinued. Um, because I don't see, I don't see cars in that driveway anymore.
They have not discontinued, but I think they're trying, they got one warning. And so I think they're trying really, really hard to meet. Interesting, yeah, interesting.
That's encouraging, though.
Yeah. We have gotten feedback that the one week minimum makes it really hard to rent, but again, commercial use in a residential, yeah. So.
Good.
Okay.
My niece nearly did a five day rental.
I mean, we, we talked about it, the one week rental is pretty thoroughly vetted, legally challenged and stood the test of time. I, I, it's hard to find a rental on Cape Cod that doesn't require a one week minimum, so, I mean.
She would have gone for the week, but I figured the kids would be happier with a pool.
Um, anything else for words?
That's all I have.
Did you want to mention more about the scam?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I'll follow up, but I, I'm actually really glad they said that under privilege of the floor because we heard from Ms. Kavaga and then Clark heard from a different applicant. There's a language barrier there, though, so I, I'll probably follow up with all the applicants just to make sure that they understand that.
Especially hopefully they haven't submitted a wire transfer.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't the first time it's happened. It's very similar looking to the last couple of times that it happened. And one of the times they called us because like the wire and number didn't work or makes it, I mean, it has gotten really close to, it's a really.
Yes, my recommendations, obviously, you know, a police department's involved and maybe there needs to be some kind of a public service announcement.
Yeah, I mean.
Or some reaffirmation on our website.
I understood why this was on there, but if you email any employee of the Mohawk Golf Club, at the bottom it says our, an employee of our business will never ask you to wire us money. That's like the thing. Instead of saying like, like Clark's quote about like envisioning great cities from Chicago or whatever, they say at the bottom, like an employee of the town in Niskuna will never ask you to wire. I was thinking of putting something like that in our signature. I like that.
Yeah, and there are some basic things, like you look at the email sender that was on there and it's, you know, at USA dot com or something. So there's some basic things that, you know, people might not be aware of that you can check.
Something on town's website. Like, someone has to take the time to put it together, though.
Very convincing, though, when you look at it.
Well, AI can do it now.
Yeah, no, it is there.
It's right off our agenda.
The email signature, I think, is a good idea, Laura, but I also wonder if there's some place in the process of communication with applicants where it is kind of called out.
Yeah, maybe we put it on an application.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's really, it's really not okay. I think it could get people in.
Yeah, no, I mean. Yeah, there were lines of, of the applicant's speech.
Yeah.
Appealing to, you know, the, the, yeah, it's, it's, it's just the wrong thing to do.
Yeah.
I'm in a bad position to put people in.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to take Trusco's lighting.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so Miss Strang will be the lead on Trusco? All right, open it up to commission business?
Just a quick question, since we're talking about lighting, whatever happened to Dave's Hot Chicken?
Never submitted a building permit. Yeah, still within their timeframe that they could do so, but they haven't. I mean, they did tell us that they might not.
Okay, it's interesting because they're losing a lot of chicken rivet.
Yeah.
It, Wingstop's very popular.
I am a vegetarian.
Every time, every time, no, I mean, so I'm not sure what grade you're referring to. Every time I'm driving by, there's always stuff going on there. I'm glad we got the crosswalk, I'm glad. There's, it's, yeah.
That's cool.
You're probably.
Pretty tucked way back in there, so I'm glad that it gets business.
Yeah, no, they, I mean, they're known, that's the key thing. And that's, that's the point we're making with Dave's Hot Chicken. Dave's Hot Chicken, I'll say it on the record, they didn't need to be that.
Oh, yeah, people actually ask me all the time when it's going to be built. You guys are not alone. I think, yeah, two weeks ago, someone asked me when Dave's Hot Chicken was going to go in.
Hopefully, my husband does ask.
There are some brands that just, they become known.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Has there been any movement on the Broadview, on Brean Street?
No, nothing's come back on that. For the record, Dave's Hot Chicken has a veggie chicken.
It's called an oxymoron.
No, it's a, it's cauliflower chicken. Apparently, it's very good, though.
And Laura's.
Ask for it, it's on their menu.
It's the secret menu. Like Dunkin'. And Starbucks. And then we're meeting, right? Safe on Seven is meeting later in October.
The Study Advisor Committee for Safe on Seven, I think they're meeting October fourteenth. And then we're planning to do a in-person, kind of like planning charade with tables set up and then a presentation in mid-November of the, so took a lot of comments, ran it past E O T, working on concept drawings, working it past the, you know, the people, Bellevue and all the people and everything, and then hopefully it will come to the public and get some feedback on those concepts that we've been driving with the public comment.
I'm sure it's not news, everyone knows it was another day.
September.
So working away on it.
All right, there's no further commission business, a motion to adjourn? All right, there's no further commission business. A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Gold.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ring. All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meeting is adjourned at 8:51 PM. Thank you, everyone.